There it is. All right, I call the June 8th Planning Commission meeting to order at 6:02 PM. Ms. Penneyard, will you go ahead and call roll, please?
Yes, Chair Heberline.
Sure.
Olive Gallagher? Olive Gallagher?
I'm here.
Jennifer Willard?
Here.
Cameron Benzba? Ron, oh, excuse me, Brienne Cosinski?
Here.
Erin Woods?
Erin, looks like you're on mute.
I see it here.
There we go, and Andrew Carr.
Here.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Ms. Penneyard. Staff, go ahead and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Okay, this is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience, either in City Hall or via Zoom, would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now.
There are no members of the public at City Hall, and we are just checking through Zoom if we have anyone here to testify.
Mimi and Sparkle, if either of you have any comments that you'd like to share with the Commission about Frog Pond tonight, we'd welcome you to do that.
So, Mimi Dukas says our hand raised. Chair Heberline?
Yeah, please.
I believe you have been unmuted, Mimi, if you'd like to speak.
Good evening, my name is Mimi Dukas, I'm with AKS Engineering. I suspect my comments would be better at the end of the work session, but yes, I'm here on behalf to talk about Frog Pond East. I'm working with West Hills Development on Frog Pond East, and we prefer a Concept A, Alternative A. We think the road network works best, and the commercial concept is the most viable option. There's real limitations for trying to move the commercial further south. Physically, the land is more parcellized, there are wetlands in that area, and it would be very challenging to implement physically. Commercial is a very challenging type of land use, particularly in newer areas like this. You need a lot of rooftops to be able to make it work, so any additional challenge just is enough to push it over the edge and make it not viable. So, putting it adjacent to the Grange in the area shown in Alternative A is really probably your best chance for success. So, I can talk later if you want, but it sounds like this is my opportunity, so that's our feedback at this point.
Well, Mimi, I really appreciate the feedback, and maybe as we go through, if there's something that comes up, we can come back to you, if that's all right.
Thank you, I appreciate the chance to chat.
Okay, it doesn't look like we have any other hands raised, so we'll go ahead and move on to our administrative matters. Let's see, we've got the May 11th, 2022 Planning Commission minutes, and they were previously distributed. Are there any corrections that need to be made to the minutes? Okay, seeing and hearing no corrections, the minutes are approved as distributed. All right, next up, we move into our work session, and it looks like we've got Mr. Polly up first for Frog Pond South.
Thanks, Chair Heberline. Good to be with you again, Commissioners. The project team's excited to have another work session with the Planning Commission on this important project for this city. So let me go ahead and get the screen shared.
And you've got a camera, we'd love to see it, Mr. Polly.
I see my smile, yes, I do have a camera here, give me a moment. All right, there I am. Okay.
Great, now we can start.
All right, so during tonight's work session, we're going to cover three topics. First of all is, starting of a topic we'll be talking about a lot the remainder of 2022, is infrastructure and infrastructure planning for Frog Pond East and South. So tonight, we'll start with a discussion of what we know about existing conditions for infrastructure beyond streets. This covers stormwater, storm sewer, water, all that pipe infrastructure. We'll also talk about the recent engagement activities that the team's been involved in, and appreciate the community's participation in that. And finally, the bulk of our time, we'll be talking about the draft master plan alternatives with the goal of getting your input into coming up with a preferred alternative that will guide our further work. So that, we'll jump into infrastructure. Along with me this evening from the city is Amy Pepper, our Development Engineering Manager, so I'll kind of lead the outline and discussion, and Amy's here for further comment and your questions. So, we'll start with water, and kind of, the way, I mean, there's a lot of detail in this infrastructure, but just wanted to hit on some of the headlines that may be of particular interest. And some of these has to do with, I mean, time and money, right? So, things that are particularly expensive, and also things that may become a critical path item in terms of allowing development at certain times. So those are really the key points that we're highlighting here. So, you know, besides building the pipes in the development area, some offsite, a couple of offsite items to note is new connections would need to be funded at Frog Pond Lane to Canyon Creek Road, so under Beckman Creek. So that'd be a major project, as well as another connection from Frog Pond South over towards the area of Beckman Creek Primary. There's also will be the memo that you have in your pocket that talks about new storage being needed. That's a broader city need. And Amy, I may have you step in here, but my understanding, talking to the city engineer, is it's still, we're not certain that project is moving forward, but we're not certain to the extent that it would hold up ability to develop in Frog Pond. So, Amy, I will pause, and anything else that you'd like to add on water?
Yeah, this storage tank is needed for overall development in Wilsonville in the next 10 years, and it's not specific to Frog Pond. It's just Frog Pond developing in this area is just another need, but we are moving forward with that project. It is going towards design this year, so we don't anticipate this being a stumbling block for development in Frog Pond East or South.
And Amy, I don't recall seeing it, I may have missed it in the materials. Where is that new storage going to be located?
So, it's just outside of city limits. It's east of Villa Bla, essentially, between Wilsonville and Sherwood. We own a parcel outside of city limits where that would be constructed. We're going, we have an old land use decision with the county that we're revamping. So, it's a little bit far away, which is why it seems like it's not specifically connected to Frog Pond East and South, but it's for the overall capacity of the city in general.
Okay, great, and Commissioner Carr, looks like you've got a question?
Yes, thank you. In the technical document, it said, in this regard, additional analysis should be conducted to determine what, if any, impact the storage deficit would have on the timing for development. So you're saying it really doesn't have, because you're looking at the 2026-2027 timeframe?
Yeah, and the, again, we're looking at overall city development, so there's a lot of anticipated water needs throughout the city, and Frog Pond East and South are just a small component of those needs.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, there's still, we'll look at it as part of it, but indication is, it's not going to become a critical path item for development at this point. But we'll definitely verify that, along with a number of other items as we do the more detailed infrastructure work in the coming months. So now for the water going back into the river. So wastewater is a major part of this. We have the Beckman Road trunk line that's part of the Beckman Bridge, Beckman Road infrastructure improvements that's in process of going forward. The big project, another big project is the Beckman Creek Interceptor, which would be built in two phases. That is a major pipe that will go all the way down from Beckman Road to Memorial Park and the Beckman Creek, along Beckman Creek. And that's a big project, about five-year construction, as I understand it. However, it's actually been, right now, we're estimating it'll be complete earlier than we thought it might be. So, right now, we're looking at 2025, and that will also provide that trail connection down the Beckman Creek corridor as well, along with that work. So, anything else on wastewater that you would add, Amy?
No, I don't have anything else to add.
And are you okay with the wastewater question now?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess the only thing that I saw when I looked at this, you know, looking at the water map first, and then looking at this one, it looks like there's multiple connections into the water grid, where it appears that all of the wastewater is going to go through Beckman, going back to, going down to the Memorial Park Pump Station. Is that, is that correct there? So if there was an event, earthquake, and we had a line break on the wastewater system, is it a single point of failure for this neighborhood?
That is correct. That is really getting back to the design basics for, between sewer systems and water systems. Water systems, to improve efficiencies and flow rates, you want to have the system looped, so that if you have water coming from multiple directions. Sewer, you're just trying to get water, the sewer by gravity, to a disposal point. If that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, I just wasn't sure, you know, if it made sense to have the south portion, you know, connect through Wilsonville High over to the interceptor or something like that, so it wasn't all tied together. But if that's the right way to do it, I'm good. I am not a wastewater engineer by any stretch of the imagination. I just wanted to ask the question.
Okay. Stormwater, stormwater, similar to how we've been doing it recently elsewhere in the city, really looking for as close to source as possible to treat it. Some things that are different than like Frog Pond West or some other projects is with the plan, housing types and such, there's going to be limited space in public right of way. We've even seen that in Frog Pond West, that there's less space in public right of way than we anticipated, because, you know, stormwater treatment and roadside swells competes with things like street trees, driveways, streetlights, all sorts of things. So we've come to kind of a better understanding of what amount in a development is actually available for stormwater treatment, and it's less than maybe some prior estimates thought. Also, but at the same time, we also want to avoid large ponds, so looking probably at more medium-sized, block-sized collection areas treatments. But also, we need to be conscious that there is going to be quite a bit of storm treatment facilities, because we're, with the amount of development anticipated out here, the total impervious area will be higher than other areas of the city. So this is a challenge that, I think we're at a good point where we know what we're looking at, and we have the tools to do a great job planning for the stormwater infrastructure to integrate in with everything else in the neighborhood. So, Amy, I'll pause there and see what else you'd like to say, if anything, about stormwater.
Just referring back kind of to your previous question about the difference between sewer and water. Water system is a loop system. Sewer becomes a little bit more dispersed with trunk lines and mains going to those trunk lines to get to one, essentially, system. Stormwater is completely dispersed, and it's intended to get the stormwater to those creeks in dispersed places. Our MS4 Phase 1 permit requires us to prioritize low-impact development, so getting that water to mimic more natural flows and how it gets into the earth is what we are required to do. So we anticipate that our stormwater facilities will be dispersed, but there, as Dan said, there is a learning opportunity in Frog Pond West, where we assume that there would be a lot more green streets, where the swales would be, street-side swales and less ponds. And because of the number of conflicts, we're finding we do have a lot more ponds than we anticipated. So, learning just lessons from Frog Pond West as we move forward, and thinking about how we accommodate stormwater management into our future development areas.
So, next steps, and then we can get into any additional comments or questions that Commission has around infrastructure. So, we'll be doing a lot of work, as I mentioned, over the coming months on infrastructure, in getting more detailed about the preliminary design, as well as cost. And that work will be starting here in July. And another part of our scope is the what-if scenario at 20 units an acre. That's tied to some of the state rules around middle housing, and really, some of the funding we actually have from the state supports kind of finding out if, what's the difference between infrastructure needs at 15 units an acre versus 20 units of acre? The idea being that if we build additional infrastructure to make sure there's not restrictions in the future if redevelopment occurs in the long run to add more housing. So with that, what questions might the Commission have about infrastructure, the memo, or anything related to infrastructure at this juncture?
I'll unmute myself. I'm going to open it up to the Commission and let anybody who wants to speak go ahead and, okay, looks like Mr. Carr, you've got your hand up?
I just noticed that it said we had a, we're updating a stormwater master plan. It was adopted in 2012, that was like 10 years ago. Is that, is that going to get updated again for this development? Or they're just planning on applying what was learned 10 years ago to this development?
So, they will be incorporating and making some assumptions about development in this area. But for the master plan level review, because stormwater is more treated at the source and closer to where the development is, it's not anticipated. They haven't identified any creek or infrastructure needs, per se, for that master plan, so it's looking at where there is problems across the city, and there's not any identified problems in this area.
Thank you.
All right, any other Commissioners with questions on infrastructure? Yeah, Commissioner Wood?
Yeah, I just had one quick question on this what-if scenario. What, is this one scenario? Or is it several scenarios that are being created to test this?
It's really a single, it's the difference in density from what is likely to be built versus what additional infrastructure would be required if it were built to accommodate 20 units per acre? Is really the question we're trying to answer. So we're not doing different likely land use alternatives. It's kind of a blanket, 20 units per acre across the planning area, just to kind of test what additional infrastructure might be needed.
Okay, I understand now, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I'm not seeing anything else. Yeah, I don't have anything else either.
Okay, thank you, and Amy, thank you for joining us, and have a pleasant evening.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so from there, let's get into engagement. And for this section, I won't be talking as much. We'll have Joe with MIG, who's been involved a lot, and also Georgia McAllister, Assistant Planner, who I really want to, again, give a public shout out. She's done a lot of great work to lead this, especially where part of the month I was unexpectedly out, kind of during some key times for outreach, and she really stepped up and really did a great job carrying it through, and really appreciate her efforts this last month. So with that, let's, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Joe to start to talk about the engagement, kind of the purpose and what we've done.
Thank you, Dan. Hi, Commissioners, good to see you. Maybe just starting with the higher-level purpose of our outreach, it was to explore and provide ways for community members to contribute to the plan alternatives that are before you tonight, and do that intentionally to involve community members who may not typically participate in planning, particularly people of color, immigrants and others, and to, through all that, discover community preferences and ideas. So, that was our ongoing purpose. To go to the next slide. We had a lively five-week period between end of April and through May. You can see the variety of engagements listed here. The two focus groups, which are the first and the fourth, excuse me, first and the fifth line, those were really the ones where we were engaging communities of color. The second one, called Focus Group 2, was conducted in Spanish. The Affordable Housing Focus Group, Georgia's going to talk about a little bit more, but it was targeted at talking to renters, and what are their thoughts about looking to the future housing needs that they may have, and how might Frog Pond connect with those needs. We held a design workshop, an interactive way, to put some hands-on activity into the maps. And then finally, there was the online survey that you may have seen on Let's Talk Wilsonville. If you put all of these activities together, we had about 80 people engaged in that five-week period. So you can always have more, but we're discovering that it's a little hard to get people out to the virtual events. And so we feel good about the diversity of the turnout, as well as the amount we got. So let's go to a couple of highlights here, if we could. Next slide, please. And I'll turn it over to Georgia to talk about the Housing Focus Groups.
Thanks, Joe. As Joe mentioned, we've done Housing Focus Groups for affordable housing with renters that live within Wilsonville. We did two of those. And actually, this week, we did an additional focus group with people who are planning to purchase a home for the first time. These are people not necessarily just living in Wilsonville, but within the Portland metro area. So we have key themes from both. I'm going to focus on the renters first, and then mention a little bit from the group looking to purchase homes. So what we did find is that our renters that live in Wilsonville, they live in Wilsonville for a reason. It's not by random, it's because they're by family, it's good school system. They really appreciate the parks, the trail systems, the amenities. They really appreciate the parks, the trail systems and amenities within the area and it feels like a really safe place to live and a safe place to grow within. That being said, they're finding that their future within Wilsonville is not very certain. Several of them have lived in, lived in Wilsonville for a long period of time off and on and they found that after leaving for a period and coming back, they can no longer afford rentals like they used to be able to. They had several occasions where the home that they were living in was actually sold and they were displaced. That's something that's happening quite frequently to many of our renters, not renting within apartment buildings or multifamily buildings. Also finding that the transit connections with the city, while they're really great, you can take the west into Portland, but it's really challenging to get there and time-consuming and not as regular as many people would like it to be, which is something that, that is challenging for people when they don't have cars or just live further out and further away. In terms of what they're looking for for future housing, they were really excited to try and give more opportunity, or to have a discussion of what they'd like to see here. They noticed a lack of single-level homes for people to purchase as well as affordable detached homes or something that people would be looking for. Senior living was a major theme in terms of those one-level homes and also having more senior living communities, the 55-plus communities within the city in close connection with the elementary school areas, creating some intergenerational connections. And then the other important thing that we found repeatedly was the importance of independence. So even if a single-family home on a lot is not something that was possible, something that feels close to that. So detached duplexes, duplexes that have an individualistic feel to them. Also found that cottage clusters, while very rarely were they the first thing people spoke to, when we talked, the discussion, it talked about, okay, so if single-family homes are out of your price range, what looks best next? Cottage clusters came up quite frequently as there's an independence in the structure while still having a shared area with your neighbors. And in terms of owning homes within Wilsonville, the renters were interested, but unsure if that was an actual possibility. We had one person who was pretty actively looking at what next steps of living would be like and mentioned that to get what they need, they feel they may need to leave Wilsonville and go to neighboring communities such as Tigard or to Wallerton who have a bit more variety in housing types. And so I think that most of the renters were really having a positive experience within Wilsonville, but unsure if they could continue that. And many of them did not feel like they would be able to purchase a home in the current market we have. Moving and shifting a little bit to talk about the focus group we held with people already looking into purchasing homes. No one in that group had actually really considered Wilsonville at that time. A lot of them were thinking about where our jobs located, where the school district's located, and those were the major key factors in their decisions. That being said, they didn't say they wouldn't consider Wilsonville as something they would look at, but the homes are not in their price range at this time. We reached out via some nonprofit organizations like Proud Ground to target this, so most of these people would be adding assistance and buying their homes in kind of the top of their budgets around $400,000. We found that many of them that are working towards getting their home are not getting ideally what they'd like to have, potentially a townhome. And many vocalized that that's really not what they want. And again, we keep hearing the same of wanting to have that independence, the single-family homes and just having, the ability to have your own space is very important to people. And those are some of the, the main takeaways of our outreach with our housing focus groups.
Okay, let's move on to the next slide here and then we'll pause when we get through these to, for your questions and discussion, Commission. So key themes that came out of the community workshop and the various focus groups, there were community focus groups. We basically asked them the same kinds of master plan focused questions that we have discussed with you and are central to the maps that we're talking about tonight. For example, what would make the Main Street successful? Which location do you prefer? Where would you place various types of housing and why? Those kinds of things. So with apologies for brevity here, here's some of the key thoughts that came out of it. To a person, folks were very supportive and excited about neighborhood commercial in the area for both the availability of services and the community gathering function that it can serve. There was gravity towards type 1 housing, the more apartment or larger townhome version of the housing being more towards Stafford Road or in the central part of the East Neighborhood with some indication along north of Advance Road. We'll show you that on maps that are coming up. Then type 2 was basically adjacent to that, to the east or to the north or to the south. People understood the destinations and connections, maps and diagrams that we shared and didn't have a lot of ideas for changes. They thought they were pretty on target. And then finally, we did get a number of what I would call kind of qualitative or kind of human-based responses about safety and walkable connections and the quality of the community, more than just the physical planning. So lots of very rich feedback from the workshop and the focus groups and I guess I should throw in the survey as well. Let's go to the next slide. So we wanted to talk about the master plan alternatives here. I'm going to start with a little bit of context for them that'll be familiar. Go through that briefly and then we'll, we'll dwell on the individual maps a little bit longer for understanding there. And I got ahead of myself. I should pause here. Chair, with, are there any comments or questions about engagement?
Great, thanks, Joe. I am opening it up to the Commission if anybody's got any questions. That's Commissioner Carr, go ahead.
So you mentioned both duplexes and cottage clusters as alternatives for affordable housing, but what, what did they, what did the community workshops and focus groups tend to prefer?
There wasn't a preference in the community workshop end of things that we heard because cottage clusters and duplexes were kind of commingled into the types. But Georgia, I think your discussion's got a little bit more specific, but what did you hear there?
Yeah, we did get a little more specific. Number one preference was single-family homes and then it was really kind of a toss-up. I would hear cottage cluster came up much more frequently than expected. That was sort of a big takeaway for me from these conversations. And then second to that would be a townhome space or duplex space that still feels independent. But the shared walls is something that people are concerned about, both ceilings and the side walls.
Thank you.
I would add that when, in the survey, we had the direct question, which a vast majority of those were, were current Wilsonville homeowners. There were a few that, that currently rented apartments or had other living arrangements. But of those, one, one interesting question was, you know, if you couldn't afford a home, what would be your next choice? And townhouses came out on top there as, which I think we also heard from first-time homeowners is like, yeah, this is, I think that's kind of what people typically understand is the next option if you're not going to be buying a detached home. And that, that reflected in the survey as well.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions on the community engagement? I'm not seeing anything. I guess from my perspective, you know, having a chance to read through it here this weekend, I really like the, the focused effort to try to gather those variety of backgrounds and opinions. I think it gives us a much more accurate picture of what the, the community as a whole needs and, and gives us that better ability to, to weigh all of the different voices. So I really appreciate all the work that, that everybody's done in, in getting that put together and soliciting that feedback.
Sounds like we're ready to go on.
I'd like to, I'd like to echo that as well and that, you know, when, when we did the survey, it was done primarily from existing homeowners, right? So they said, well, I'd rather have, you know, single-family housing because that's what I have. So I'm, I'm glad that our, that we made an effort to involve renters, go to that extra level to involve those because those are, those are the ones that are going to probably look to an alternative to an apartment building that would fit into the duplex townhouse. You know, if, once you've lived in a single-family house, unless you have some kind of income constraint, you're pretty much going to prefer that. And I think that's what the survey told us. So I'm glad you guys made an effort to go beyond just the, the standard homeowner that we, we all know.
All right, Mr. Dale, go ahead.
I think Commissioner Woods had a comment too.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, I do. In, in talking with the various groups, what I read in the, in the packet is there's concern about individuals being able to finance and I believe it was a comment concerning, from us, concerning being creative with that. And so was there much discussion on that with people and their comments?
Georgia, in your groups, any discussion of financing?
In the homeowner group, it was quite a bit. Yeah, go ahead, Georgia.
Yeah, as, as Dan was just saying, within the affordable housing group, when we were talking with people looking to buy their first home, we discussed a little bit partnering with, or working with Proud Ground to get some funding. I believe one was probably family support was part of it and others were really at the beginning phase and trying to learn what options there are. I don't know if you had anything else to add on that, Dan?
Yeah, I mean, clearly there, there's a thirst for options there for, for particularly down payment assistance and just being able to bridge that gap to get started as a homeowner. And so that's, I mean, there's additional work that needs to be done to see what possibilities the city can do and with different partners. And we plan on continuing to pursue that.
Okay, yeah, because I would think, you know, that would be a major concern, knowing the cost of homes and of course the price point that they would be looking to pay. So what I would strongly encourage is that we spend more time on that as much as possible. I wouldn't say that you guys aren't doing that, but I think that's a really important area that needs to be addressed and we need to be able to provide to potential homeowners that we want to stay here in Wilsonville, how they might be able to finance their home. So, thank you.
Okay, I think we'll roll ahead here then. Dan, if you could go to the next slide, please. So to introduce the master plan component of our presentation, first thing to tell you is that we shared with the community the same community design concepts that were discussed with the Planning Commission over several meetings, but sort of coalescing in April. And so these are probably familiar topics from those discussions, addressing housing, how the transition or what's called the transective densities is intentional, the neighborhood center, connectivity. You can see all the topics listed here. Let's go to the next slide. Trees, open space, the BPA easement, grange, et cetera. So to set the stage, shared that with all of our participants in, in the outreach process. Go to the next slide, please. We introduced three types of housing that I'll show you in a moment and you saw in the packet, but starting with the principles of how they would be applied. And this is also emerging from the discussions with both the Planning Commission and the Council. Variety in each neighborhood, a logical transition of size and density, the three types, and then affordable choices. And I will footnote that in our discussion here, when we talk about affordability, it's really providing that opportunity within the array of housing types and the range of them. The implementation of regulated affordable housing that's serving lower ends of the spectrum and, and we had a memorandum and discussion about in February, that's really a implementation strategy that of course needs its own initiative by the city and, and momentum and programmatic effort. So our discussion here about affordable choices is more about what can be put on the land. Go to the next slide. So here are the three housing types in pictures. The type 1 is the multifamily and larger townhome array. If a small lot were to be done in, detached were to be done in type 1, it's the much more compact version of it. Type 2 is more your middle housing opportunities, but still allowing for a diversity of small lot detached and, and then type 3 is the lower density end of the spectrum, but allows middle housing. So we use these as sort of a handy set of prototypes to, to talk with people and I would say it turned out successfully. Folks were able to understand the three types and place them on the maps. Dan, I want to pause here. Anything you want to fill in about the, the range of housing types?
I would, I think it's always helpful for those of you that live in Wilsonville and kind of give examples and also reiterate that all of these have a variety. All of these include some sort of single-family and some sort of middle housing and townhouses. It's more about kind of the look and feel and the overall urban design. So we want to avoid that type 1 is not just multifamily. I mean, it include, it may include some apartment buildings, it may include predominantly townhouses, it may include small lot detached, about, you know, 3,000 or less square feet. So type 1, I, I like to think of it as the Villebaugh Village Center outside of the, the village, the, the mixed-use core, which includes that variety I mentioned, including detached and townhouses and some apartment buildings. Type 2 is really more Villebaugh outside the Village Center as well as kind of the southwest portion of Frog Pond West built by Pelish Homes, which kind of has smaller lot, however, a lot more middle housing, but we'd expect to be integrated in, in this context in Frog Pond East and South. And then type 3 has a look and feel similar to single-family neighborhoods we see in Wilsonville today, but also includes more housing variety than we'd see in a traditional single-family neighborhood in Wilsonville.
Commissioner Woods, did you have a, a comment or question of what we've talked about so far?
Yeah, I do. I'd like to know where would tiny homes fit into one of these types?
Great question. Dan?
So it could be in, in any of the above. Larger complexes of cottage clusters because of lot size, because a larger lot size is, is a key part of type 3. So having a 6,000 to 10,000 square foot lot where you have a larger variety of, of cottage clusters around a courtyard would likely be more type 3. But you could also do it on, in a smaller form in type 1 or type 2, so.
Okay, thank you.
But I think you were talking about tiny homes in particular, you know, like the, the tiny homes, yeah.
Yeah, tiny homes, right. Less than, less than 800 square feet.
So, yeah, so.
Want to change your answer?
So I'll add that also tiny homes can be ADUs and ADUs are allowed throughout, including, looking at the policy that we've talked about before is including the allowance of ADUs with townhouses, with all types of townhouses. So tiny homes could be incorporated anywhere really in the project.
All right, let's go on to the next slide. These two maps are the results of the workshop breakout groups. And they're in your packet. I don't intend to, to kind of go through the detail of them, but they were the starting point for the alternative maps that we have drawn and will describe in the following slides. And as I mentioned before, the progression of questions here with the groups started with connectivity. Where in Wilsonville are future residents of these neighborhoods trying to get to? How can we be mindful of those walking connections or rolling connections or take the bus or however you get there? That led to discussion of commercial, then residential types, parks, and so on. So people played a chip game to, to place their ideas on the maps for where these various land uses might go. Next slide, please.
And this is a similar question that was asked as part of the survey. And particularly this information, I mean, we asked, what's the preferred type, which the predominantly, single-family respondents, homeowner respondents tended towards three. But when, when introduced idea, so if type, if type one is somewhere, where would be the best spot? And we saw similar patterns of the transect that's in the area plan that was reflected as well in the workshop. So we're seeing consistency of that idea across, as we asked, different ways. So certainly, the location one, which is around the mixed-use commercial, closer to Stafford Road, was the preferred location for the denser type of housing, where we definitely saw the preference for the type three on the edges such as location two or down to location five and seven, where saw more of a mix and kind of neutral opinions around areas three, six, and four.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, could you go back to the two maps? So one of the things that was talked about, I think it was in affordable housing session, was the fact that you don't, that there should be an attempt not to put all types of housing, you know, like have all your type ones all together and type twos and type threes, because you kind of build that, you know, housing project type feel. And I think that map two does a better job of kind of dispersing different housing styles throughout both east and south. You know, where you got that upper right quadrant of east, you've got type one, twos, and threes all up there. Whereas on the left side, all you've got is type threes. So, you know, kind of spreading out the different housing styles kind of throughout is what was being attempted in that, in that right side map.
I think those options, those options that you alluded to, Commissioner Carr, are reflected in the different alternative maps that we'll see here.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to the next slide and I think we'll advance two. So we're going to go through each of the alternatives now. There's several maps and diagrams for each. I'll bring in my colleague, Somya Kinney from Walker Macy, who by the way, is the hand, or part of the team of hands behind these maps. And so we'll tag team a little bit to co-present. Alternative A is shown here in very diagrammatic form. And Dan, I don't know if you can operate the cursor here as I kind of talk about things. But really, this, this alternative is shaped around three major destinations in the two neighborhoods. The first is up in the Grange area. The extension of Frog Pond Lane, of course, comes into the area for access. But the heart of it up there would be the location of Commercial up at that northern area. And then of course, the Grange and the East Neighborhood Park would all be co-located to create a community destination. And then the other two major destinations are ones that have been on the books for years. So the Future Community Park and Meridian Creek Middle School. The little stars on these maps are what we are calling neighborhood destinations. They are not really fully defined at this point, but the idea did emerge from the WA and a couple of other places where a tot lot or a small green space, maybe an HOA provided open space that is more localized in the neighborhood, provides a small scale, like at the end of your block, opportunity to see your neighbors and for a little bit of open space. So we have major destinations and we have neighborhood destinations. And then you can see the obvious connections between them with the green lines and the conceptual streets. I should probably point out the obvious that not all streets are shown in these maps, just what we call framework streets. So there's the diagrammatic version of destinations and connections for alternative A. Go to the next slide. So here's the land use concept. The color scheme here is brown is type one, orange is type two, yellow is type three. And this is a very intentional progression of density from west to east, from Stafford Road to the east edge, or I guess in the, in the case of 60th from 60th east, with the one exception being the south end of the, of the property adjacent to the middle school. But fairly intentional transect here coupled with those community destinations. And that's really the heart of it right there. Let's go to the next slide and we'll fill in a few of the blanks. Here are a few of the early metrics on this. What we did was we took these conceptual maps, we put them in GIS, applied the densities that are described in the, in the memo and did a little math to estimate the amount of housing. Two things about the estimates. One, this will, it looks more exact than it is frankly, because these are fuzzy maps. But it gives us an indication of the level of housing. So alternative A, about 1,580 dwellings. You can see the net density there and the mix of units being, I'm going to go with percentage of units, about 27%, 27% of them would be type one and 48% type two. So this is a very middle housing kind of oriented approach. To give you a benchmark, the area plan, this is more housing capacity than the area plan. The area plan back in 2015 was 1,320 estimated dwellings and no type ones in it at all. It was really all focused on more type two and type three housing. Okay, so that's an overview of alternative A. I know this is a lot to drink in, so we're going to take it slowly. Let's back up two slides and Somya, if you could sort of add a little more observations and your thoughts on A, alternative A.
Sounds good. Hi, everyone. This is Somya. I'm an urban designer and planner at Walker Macy, landscape architect. Nice to see you all. I've been supporting this team on the kind of community design, the fun side of thinking about options for this area. So Joe gave a great overview. I'll just sort of touch on all of these after he walks through it with the kind of perspective of the opportunities that we see for community design and the kind of differentiation between the schemes for each. With all of these, I would say the intent is really, like you said, to create connected neighborhoods that are really accessible and provide many different options for getting around. So you'll see that we're looking at connections not just within the study area, but also to surrounding destinations like Beckman Creek Primary and the Frog Pond West area, for example. And then the other thing is we have some choices about where to create new destinations and gathering places within the east and south neighborhoods. And for alternative A, the choice that we've made is to show a kind of conglomeration of all those destinations and all that activity up in the north corner of the east neighborhood. And there's some positives to that. If you flip to the next slide. There's some positives to that in that we're sort of combining some of the really great attributes of this area in the Grange and that civic gathering space and then a new commercial area and then having a neighborhood park close by, so it creates this great synergy. Some of the kind of cons to that is that it's no longer as central of a destination for other parts of this area. So for example, if you live down south of Meridian Creek Middle School, that commercial main street is a little less accessible to you in terms of walking or rolling distance. So that's one kind of differentiator of this scheme. I'll also note that we are looking at future transit alignments or the potential for future transit alignments that would in theory serve or go through that main street area. What else here? I think Joe covered the kind of transition of density concept being kind of the western edge is the bigger buildings, more density, and transitioning toward the rural edge to smaller buildings and lower density. But I think for all of these, it's important to remember that the brown color isn't just apartments. It would kind of be a mix of multiple different housing products. And so hopefully, the kind of, when we get down to a little more detail, we're really looking at how those types of sites can be designed, block by block, in a way that can make sure that there are public connections and it doesn't feel like singular blocks of one type of housing. I think that, that's probably all I've got to say on those.
All right, a couple of last things here from me. One, just to emphasize the transit. It's a little hard to see the blue line, but if, I'll describe it to you. If you can imagine riding the bus up, up Wilsonville Road, you take a right at Advance and then you can go directly to the middle school where there's a stop and then around the community park and then follow the 60th to Frog Pond Lane and then back. So really good opportunities for providing transit proximity in this area. We have had our team under discussion about the pros and cons of the various commercial sites. With all due respect to the comments you heard earlier, the opinion from the, our Leland Consulting Group is that the Brisbane location for the Main Street Commercial is the more feasible from a market perspective. If there's more localized mapping in that area, we would love to see it about site conditions. But that is the opinion of the team at this point. And we do have under discussion also with the transportation group, how left turns would work at that Brisbane location. So we don't know that for sure at this time. A process check. Chair, we thought it might be helpful to pause at each alternative just for clarifying questions. We'll get to your opinions a little bit later, but would you like to open it up to clarifying questions on these maps we've looked at so far?
Sure, sounds like a great idea. So if any of the commissioners have any clarifying questions, not opinions, let's, let's open it up for that now and then we'll, we'll hold all the fun stuff for, at the end of the presentation. Commissioner Carr?
So if I'm to understand our previous conversation and apply it to this map, you could in theory have a cluster of tiny homes in that upper right-hand quadrant of east. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that helps.
And that's all subject to kind of how the regulations frame up once we're to that level of detail, but that's a working thought now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other clarifying questions? Seeing anybody, so we'll go ahead and keep moving.
Okay, so we'll move on to alternative B. I'm going to start again with the, the major destinations. This concept takes a little different approach. It starts from the premise of the commercial main street at Brisbane. And if you can use the cursor, that would be super helpful, Dan. So Commercial there, the Grange is still a destination in its kind of small and historic way. The East Neighborhood Park, we placed it central in the east neighborhood. And then you have the two destinations in the south neighborhood area. And so the net effect of all that is that you have kind of five of these places within the, the context of the two neighborhoods as opposed to the three that were shown in the previous alternative. Basically the same connectivity, a few refinements here and there. So let's go to the next slide. The land use concept here is a little bit more focused for type one in the southwest corner at Stafford Advance and then radiating with type one along Advance and into the central area, providing type one close to that park and, and close to the main street area in the east neighborhood. And then you can see how the type two kind of radiates out from there, but is also kind of in a couple of nodes in the south neighborhood and then in the upper Colley Road areas as well, following our principle of diversity in each, each area. Yeah, next slide is good. So this alternative has an estimated 1,389 dwellings. And again, that's a little closer to what the area plan projected at 1,322. The mix of housing units is a little more evenly split. This is kind of a one-third, one-third, one-third kind of approach, more or less. And I haven't talked about the sub-districts yet, but the black line work around portions of each neighborhood are how we're kind of seeing localized sub-districts shape up. And those help us think about the progression of housing and location of different housing types. They also help us think about where to place the stars. Where will people be just a block or two away from some neighborhood destination that isn't one of the major ones? Let's see, so I think that's all I have. Somya, let's go to your observations.
Okay, sounds good. So if we go back to the connections and destinations, as Joe mentioned, this is probably our option with the most kind of dispersion of centers of activity and gathering. So we intentionally placed the commercial main street along Brisbane, which kind of has a more traditional kind of form, I would say, for our main street than the previous option we looked at, which would have to deal with the changing of the direction of the street. This would be kind of your buildings facing the street, nice wide sidewalks moving east to west, promenade style kind of main street. And then we pushed the east neighborhood park just a block or two away, further to the east, so you can imagine some nice opportunities to kind of have folks stroll in the main street, walking down to the neighborhood park and spending some time. The other differentiator, as we're sort of exploring different options for connectivity and land use in this area, is you'll notice this option shows a street alignment between Frog Pond Lane and 60th that is curved, but also provides some space for development between the street and the BPA easement. So it's just another exploration of another way to make that connection. I think all three alternatives show a slightly different way of making that connection. That's something worth noting. And then if you move to the next slide. I think in terms of the density concept for this scheme, we're really, we thought about it in terms of what if we oriented the density around key intersections and the largest of those being Stafford and Beckman Advance Road. So the sort of building form and higher densities would be concentrated generally around that intersection and sort of dispersing radially out toward the east and north and south. And then there would be these key nodes at other intersections throughout the study area that would also provide those kind of central nodes of a little more density in different building form. I think that's all I got.
I'm glad you mentioned the curved road here, Somya, because it's important to think about these alternatives as a kit of parts. You have the opportunity to mix and match different components. So if you like the street aspect of this one or another one, it could be matched with another preference for land use. And that's a little bit of a foreshadowing here because we're going to. And that's a little bit of a foreshadowing here because we're going to ask for your opinions at the end, actually, with the layers of the layer cake, commercial than residential, et cetera, as a suggestion. Okay. Chair, I think back to you for any questions, comments on B.
Yeah, so clarifying questions on B. And go. Commissioner Willard.
It's not exclusive to B. I just realized that I assume that the cell tower would be relocated as part of this. Do we know what would happen with the cell tower?
We don't at our end of things. Dan, have you had any discussion with the property owner or others?
We have not. I think the working thought is we're not assuming that's moving at this point. So, and I would, and based on some of the comments that Ms. Duke has made earlier, you know, these are rough lines. Certainly, we'd keep where the commercial is located. I mean, we'd be thoughtful as we get into more fine line drawing of the existing cell tower and the existing property lines. But these are fuzzy lines at this point, kind of the gradient. So certainly, it may not be as wide on the south side to avoid impacting that property.
Okay, okay. That's a good clarification. Thank you.
I'm not seeing any, but I have a few, so I want to make those real quick. So this one's a, both of mine are more general clarifying questions. So related to the area plan, you referenced that there was 1,320 dwellings. But that area plan obviously was done before HB 2001. Do we know what that area plan and the number of dwellings would look like if HB 2001 had been in place at the time?
We don't, I think is the answer as far as I know. And Dan, you can add as well. It's a great question because these estimates right here are not assuming a level of future infill via HB 2001. So for example, we have a component, if you look at the yellow part of the pie here, Type 3, any detached lots that make up that slice of the pie, under the middle housing rules, can have duplex, triplex, quadplex put on them. But we haven't assumed a certain number of that infill. So it's not infused in here other than providing lots of middle housing opportunity, and we don't know what the area plan would have been.
Yeah, so the area plan, we haven't gone back and asked the question in that manner that you stated at Chair Heberline. I do think that, you know, we build, it's as we'll highlight again here in a bit, you know, we took the area plan, we added in the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan and the middle housing project and the additional understanding we got through that. And then we've added in public comment that we've gotten through this process as well as the middle housing process and kind of added all those layers to that original area plan to inform what you're looking at tonight.
Okay. And I guess, you know, my commentary is it will be probably worth having a clear and concise explanation to the community as to if we go above the 1,320 units, dwellings that was defined in the area plan, why are we doing it? And having that rationale, because I could very easily see some segments of the population saying, well, Alternative B, because it's the closest to the area plan and we want to stay within the spirit of the area plan. But I have a feeling that we're going to need to have a message if we end up going larger than that as to why we're going larger.
And the short answer at this point is more affordable choices.
Yeah, and I'm on board. I buy off on it. It's the matter of having a conversation with the rest of the community that may not see it exactly the same.
Yep.
And then the other one that I had, which is another kind of larger question, you know, at the start of the presentation, it was the discussion around the logical transition of size and density. Are we making the assumption here that there will never be any development to the west, to the north, or to the south of this area? And that this is going to be the rest of the city boundary till the end of time? Or do we expect that we will continue to grow in those areas and then that transition of density becomes less impactful?
Dan, I think you're probably the best one to start this.
Yeah, and in this sense, it is quite a bit different from Frog Pond West, because Frog Pond West, the area north of Frog Pond West is an urban reserve and is kind of thought about as this area will urbanize. Most of the area around this is rural reserve, which that means is from the adoption is a 50-year timeframe expected that it'd remain rural. So really, in that sense, the assumption is this will be a rural edge for at least, for decades at least. And that is, yeah, so in that sense, we're not thinking about it continuing beyond that in terms of urban design.
Okay, that's great. And that's the clarification I was hoping to understand. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Carr.
Except that rural edge to the east of south, say that quickly, that's being developed. It's not, that's not necessarily rural now, isn't it? Wasn't it sold and being developed now?
Yeah, it's being developed. There are quite a few homes being built out there, but it's at a rural level. You know, you're not talking urban densities out there, homes that are still on septic, kind of that rural level of development, more than historically it's been there, but it still is kind of large lot, kind of semi-rural, if not rural.
So the area north of west is urban reserve, which we're expecting maybe in the next 20-plus years, that might be pulled into the urban boundary and developed. But the north of east, you're saying would probably remain more rural?
Correct.
And not have the same type of density?
Okay, correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification on those.
Okay, looks like we're moving to C at this point then. So Alternative C is a sort of a variation on the five, I guess I'd call it the four destination approach. We've got the Grange, we've got Main Street with the park intentionally put next to Main Street. That came out of some of our participants' comments in various groups and meetings. And then the public uses that are south of Advance Road and the connections being largely the same. Next map, please.
And I will add on this. It shows on this one, future transit going on to Brisbane. There's no talk of transit going into Frog Pond West, so that transit line should curve again and go back on to Stafford. So that was just an update that wasn't made there. So if there's any question there.
Yep. Okay. All right, so if we move to land use, then lower-left diagram is sort of the circle version of how the dispersed land use has been done in this map. This has more total units in it, so that's part of the driver for dispersion. But the concept is to have all three types in various areas. We had a discussion about whether we thought Type 1 was appropriate up in Colley Road. You can kind of reason it either way, but you can see that the pattern of centralized Type 1 in the East Neighborhood and then a couple of nodes of Type 1 in the South Neighborhood with Type 2 radiating adjacent to those. And then finally, on to the next slide and the metrics here, the combination of the brown and the orange drives more units. We wanted to test one alternative as being decidedly more affordable choices. And so this gets to 1,800 dwellings, about 15 units to the acre. I will share that there are other expansion areas that are around the metro area that are working in that end of the density range for affordability kind of reasons. And the mix of units here, you can see how it really relies on a lot of middle housing. That's the 49% of the left-hand pie and 36% of Type 1 as well, which reduces the total amount of Type 3. Okay? Somia?
I'll chime in on the first, the kind of destinations and connections piece. This is showing kind of the park right next to the Main Street. So it's a subtle difference, but I think it provides kind of a different scheme. And then the connection of Frog Pond Lane down to 60th, this is showing the same alignment that was shown in the area plan, which has a sort of street, public street along the edge of the BPA easement. The development would be on one side of the street and then a permanent easement on the other side, which has some benefits but also some detriments from a funding perspective. And then I also want to just note in all of these, the Grange up at the north, we think is a really good opportunity for some trail connections, some kind of outdoor gathering and indoor gathering spaces. And there's maybe some good kind of programming opportunities with the natural resources and the wetland nearby, maybe some community gardens, lots of opportunities there, so keep that in mind. And then I would say on the density concept, as Joe mentioned, this is kind of looking at nodes of density more dispersed throughout the study area at higher density, and that's why it ends up being the most units. The primary node is oriented around the neighborhood park, kind of at the end of the Main Street, so you could see some nice opportunities for folks living in more dense housing to have access to that neighborhood park. And I think with this and with all the schemes, it'll be really important for us to kind of guide future development in such a way that we're making sure there's lots of public access, that none of these development types are creating islands unto themselves but have, feel really integrated throughout the area. I believe that covers everything I wanted to say on this one as well. Actually, I'll call it one more thing. At the workshop, we had an idea, or we heard an idea for a potential senior housing complex or sort of project opportunity that would be right next to the Meridian Creek School. So that's what that particular node of density is intended to communicate.
And I think this is our final stop for clarifying questions.
All right. Anybody with clarifying questions for Alternative C? All right, seeing none.
So we've organized the feedback portion of this a little bit, first of all, by making a couple of maps to put the three alternatives together. Dan, I'm going to look to your guidance, but I think maybe going to the next slide is the right way to introduce the discussion questions and the little poll that we have framed up.
Sure, so yeah, we want to maybe ask any general questions. So I see this as three steps, kind of ask any general questions or additional clarification or even try to make a point. But really, so that's what we want to do now, as well as remind, again, as I spoke about earlier, that building on that framework of the area plan and what's added to that, that in looking at these options, we're considering everything we've done to this point. I mean, since the area plan, the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, the Affordable Housing Analysis, the design concepts we've discussed in the last work session as well as public input. So that's all kind of coming together and funneling to this discussion tonight. So with that in mind, the three questions, what questions do you have at this point? From there, I prepared a quick poll where we'll have the commissioners kind of go through each element. I think I can go to the next slide here. So we'll go through each element and ask which, what's the preference? And so we'll get those preferences out in the poll, and then once we get the poll back, we can do a roundtable for the commission to really explain why they polled or voted the way they did. Does that sound like it works for you commissioners?
Sounds great. Let's do it.
All right, so any questions before we do the poll?
Not seeing any hands go up.
Oh, I've got one. I was fumbling with my mute button. At the end of the day, it seems like we don't have to be directional with this. You know, like for example, if we take the top two sub-districts, you know, could you mix and match, you know, go east to west on one sub-district and then follow Plan Alternative C on another sub-district? I mean, they don't have to be exactly like this, right?
Yeah, so the way we structured it in the poll you'll be seeing is we didn't ask by sub-district, but we did ask
Okay.
east and south. So there's one saying, which one do you prefer for west, which is north of Advance? And which one do you prefer for south, which is south of Advance?
Okay, okay.
And if there's further mix and matching beyond that, then I think that can come up in the roundtable comments.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, are we ready for the poll?
Sounds like we might be ready for the poll, yeah.
Yes, let's do it.
Do we, we have to?
Yep, you should have a
Do we have to fill anything out or we're just going to speak?
All right, you just click the buttons on which ones you choose.
And then we'll do a roundtable.
No, we can't vote. Hey, Dan, we can't vote. Host and panelists can't vote.
No.
Well, that doesn't work too great.
I guess we're going to verbalize it, huh?
So much for the secret ballot.
Okay.
And I don't know that that can be, we tested this, but didn't get that point. So this is trying something new and new stuff doesn't always work. That's fine. Why don't you, maybe if you have
Chat? Do we use chat? Do we have chat? No, we don't.
Chat's disabled, so maybe if you have, if you can bring up like a notepad or kind of
Just a show of hands.
Or just a show of hands, we can do that as well. So thank you for the great idea. That works too. Let's make this simple, so
A hand is free. It's free.
Okay, so let's start with one. And since I'm talking to Mandy, if you can help kind of jot it down, I'll try to jot it down as well. So which alternatives show the preferred commercial location? So the options are Alternative A at Frog Pond Lane at Stafford, Alternative B or C, which are both at Brisbane Street at Stafford, or none of the above, something else. So we'll start with Alternative A. Go ahead and raise your hand if you would select Alternative A. And then Alternative B. Have that noted. Okay. And then none of the above or something else.
Dan, for those of us that couldn't see all the votes, could we just read them back quickly to summarize?
We have zero votes for Alternative A, four votes for Alternative B and C.
I'm sorry?
I had A.
Okay, one vote for Alternative A, four votes for Alternative B and C, and zero Okay, one vote for alternative A, four votes for alternative B and C, and zero votes for none of the above.
Thank you.
Do any of the commissioners want to add a vote to any of those?
So I would say, Commissioner Woods, are you abstaining from voting on this one?
No, I thought we were going to go with C, but you combined B and C together, so I'm with that.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Take it one step at a time.
Okay. So two is which alternative shows the preferred residential pattern for Frog Pond East? Again, this is the area north of Advance Road. So give you a moment to think about that.
Dan, it might be helpful to minimize the question window also, if that's easy to do at your end.
You can, you can move it, you can
I'll move it over.
Yeah.
I don't need to remember. I only need to read it to, well, to, hold on. I gotta go to the other computer. I can minimize it on this one. So have it up so I can see it. Okay. And again, this would, if your preference would be for the commercial to be at Brisbane, this would just assume like switching the round for where the commercial is, an alternative A. And alternative C. And none of the above or something else. Well, we look forward to that discussion.
And I have some with chocolate.
Did we get everyone's
Could we read back the votes, please?
Can you read them back?
We had one vote for alternative A, two votes for alternative B, two votes for alternative C, and one vote for none of the above or something else.
Okay, thank you. So next, which alternative shows the preferred residential pattern for Frog Pond South? Area south of Advance Road. So alternative A, well, if you want to raise your hand for alternative A. Okay, alternative B. Okay. And none of the above or something else.
I won't vote twice just to mess you up. I'll leave my hand down.
Okay. So Mandy, do you have that?
So the only one we had votes for were six votes for alternative C.
Okay.
Wow, that was interesting.
So which alternative shows the preferred location of an east neighborhood park? Keeping in mind that if, even if the commercial was not at Frog Pond Lane, the community park could still be up there around the Grange. So, and alternative A, which is by the Grange. Okay, alternative B, which is the central part, disconnected from, but down this, but a block or two away from the commercial. And then, alternative C, which is adjacent to the commercial. And none of the above or something else. Okay, Mandy, can you read that back?
We have one vote for alternative A, one vote for alternative B, and four votes for alternative C.
Okay, thank you. And last question is on the, on the general street layout for the framework streets. Which alternative shows the preferred layout of streets in Frog Pond? And again, these are framework streets. In Frog Pond East, north of Advance, really, there's not, I mean, the framework street already exists in south, so we're really not asking that question. Particularly the Frog Pond Lane to 60th connection. So alternative A, which is a straight line offset from the BPA easement. Okay? Alternative B, which is curvilinear. And alternative C, which is straight lines with a segment adjoining the BPA easement. Okay? And none of the above or something else. And can you report back to us, Mandy?
We have one vote for alternative A, three votes for alternative B, and two votes for alternative C.
Okay, thank you. So let's go ahead, if it's okay, Chair, and maybe do a roundtable to explain. Well, that's actually, so how many none of the above or something elsees did we have? Let's maybe step through those real quick, and then we'll do a roundtable. Actually, or Chair, let me think through this, or I guess we can just describe our none of the above, something else, as we do take our roundtable turn. That might be more efficient at this point, if that's okay with you, Chair.
Sure. I think there was only one none of the above, right? That was me? Yeah. Okay, I can hold that until the end. Yeah, that's fine.
Dan, can you remove the poll window that's displaying?
We don't see the poll window that's displaying, Joe. I think that's on your screen only.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you can hit the, you can hit the red X to close it.
And a little exit button, thank you.
Yeah, you can end the poll.
Okay, so, yeah, roundtable. Commissioner Zadzinski, why don't you start it off?
Can we get the questions back, just so I can go off of a little bit more?
Yes.
So I don't really have any additional questions. As far as which alternative I prefer, kind of the toss-up between A and C for me right now, I don't like density, I'm sorry, I don't like alternative B as much. I think it's, obviously, it's the lowest density. I think it doesn't have as much room for kind of that integration of the different neighborhoods and densities that we kind of have been thinking about when we were planning this. But I have an A and C. I mean, I like, I guess I like A the most, but I don't like the commercial property there. I like it more in the C location as well as where the park is. But yeah, I would like to stress the most of having maybe a type 1 and 2, just going off of what the summaries were from the community engagements, since it seems like townhouses and clusters are going to be kind of the most affordable and second choice than the standard detached housing. So I'm going to, I'm going to say number C is probably my favorite.
And also, if, so, and clarify again, and you can go through the different elements if you want. So if I recall your voting, so it could be like a combination of maybe the east, the east to west look of the north part, but then the integration of additional type 1 in the south part. Am I hearing you correctly?
Yeah, I kind of, well, I guess for C, I like the centralized kind of radiation element. I do like that.
So type C, really? Okay.
And, yeah, was there, was there anything else? And streets, I just think, I voted for B, but I, it doesn't, I guess A or B would be my choice for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Zadzinski. Commissioner Carr?
Thank you. So I prefer the commercial section up by the Grange. I think we've heard from, if you participated in a couple of the, I think, the focus groups, commercial developers are preferring this. Unless we can find a way for the city to own the land and not make an expense to the developers while this is being built out, because the commercial section won't be viable until we're closer to build out. So you're, you're going to have this blank flat of land for quite a while. That, as I think through it, it could be a community park with the Grange until such time that the rooftops are there to warrant a commercial build out. As far as the street, I, I like C, because I think what you would find if somebody has a house that backs up to the green space, and you're going to have that full of trails and people, people will put fences there. And I think that will detract from the beauty of having that easement and that being some open space. So that's why I prefer C to that. I like the south side with C, just because of the density and the, the reason I'm also putting the, the park up by the Grange is you cut that 10-acre community park there just south of Advance Road. So I think you're, I don't know that we need 15 acres of park, because we're going to also incorporate little neighborhood parks in, in each of these segments. And then, what else was there? That was all the topics we talked about. So my preference is A, but I like a splash of C in A.
So you like the Frog Pond East, the A trans, transition, with a splash of C for the south part?
Yes, and the road from C.
Okay.
The, the east road from C, the south density from C, and then the Grange for A, the commercial and the Grange.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Commissioner Woods?
Yeah, you know, I'll be honest with you. I like a lot of the elements of alternative B, but I really like alternative C more. One, I like the location of the park being separate. I don't really like it being up near the Grange, although I understand reasoning behind that. You know, and with the Grange having its own location there. The other thing I like, we started looking at the housing types. And, you know, the focal point there at Stafford and Advance, I know we have a larger scope of type 1 dwellings that are radiating out there to type 2s and 3s. But it also allows for additional mixing of, I think, land use types. And one of the key pieces for me is the units, you know, for more potential affordable housing, which I think is a major target there. As far as the streets, with the radiating piece there, I like that. But basically, that's it for me. C, C, alternative C overall is my pick.
Dan, any, any questions or clarifying comments on that?
Nope, that makes sense. Thanks.
Okay, great. Commissioner Gallagher?
Well, I don't have a lot to say. Strangely. I gravitate toward the D. I like the flow of it. I like the placement of the park. I like the fact that the park and the commercial area is a little bit more centrally available to both parts of the development rather than at the top. I also question whether or not having the park a little bit separated from the commercial area provides sort of the safety corridor for children that are playing away from what could be a very busy street. So I'm, I'm kind of, I'm kind of open to B or C, but I'm a little partial to the B. As far as the density is concerned, frankly, I'm sorry, I've been sick. I, I just don't feel right now, I have enough information to really make an informed judgment on that, so I'm going to leave it to the experts at the moment and see where, you know, where it, where it goes. I like the look and feel of everything that we've been presented tonight to. I want to compliment the planners on that. That's it.
Mr. Willard?
All right. My preference is alternative C. I like that the park and the Grange are separated. I think it creates different, separate points of interest. I think it'll get used more. I think that larger park embedded around the dense area, it'll get used a lot, and it may not as, as much where it is in alternative A. And that configuration where the commercial hits a road and then there's a big park is, is the same configuration that they have at Arancos Station in Hillsborough. It's very familiar to me. I walk there as often as I can for lunch. And so I have personal experience with that configuration. I think it works really well. I, I'm calling it the thumb, which is the place in between the middle school and the future community park. That, the idea of the, that the community member gave about a senior center there, that sounds like a lovely idea. That's probably my, what drew me to C for the south. And I like that the road is adjacent to the easement. I think that'll create access points for people that may not live in the neighborhood and know the, the smaller, more narrow access points. And so I think it'll, it potentially will get used more even by people that don't live in the neighborhood.
All right. I guess it's my turn. Okay, so related to the north area, I picked none of the above, primarily because I had a couple of specific things. So in general, the north there, in general, my preference is alternative C. In the north area, my preference would be to have the type 1 on the left around the commercial center, so that you have the, generally, the larger density near the commercial center and then radiating into type 2 as you go to the right, to the east. Yeah, east. So that's one, one of the, one of my recommended changes. The other one is relating to those two north areas on the north side of the BPA easement. My thought with that was if you're really wanting to do a transition, I would have recommended that you have the type 2 on the south side of both of those nearer to the BPA easement, and then transition to the type 3 as you go north to Colley Road, instead of having it clustered in the center. So that was why I said none of the above, because I just wasn't on board with, with any of them in the, in the specifics. From a commercial development perspective, I like the idea of there being some sort of green area near the commercial center. And so whether it's the, across the street in alternative C, or whether maybe we make an L-shaped commercial area in the, in the location as identified in B or C, and maybe have the, the lower right-hand quadrant be that park area, so that there was the ability to have some integration into the commercial street, kind of the, you know, piazza-type development where you have some more space. That would be something I could get behind as, as well. Because I think, and I'm not an expert on this side, so I'll defer to the experts, if the Brisbane alignment is better for the commercial development, then that's where we should put it. Even if I like the concept of having it, having the park area like it is in Alternative A, I want to make sure that it's commercially viable first and that we give ourselves the highest probability of success. That's it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Dan, just a, Dan, just a quick catch-in, check-in with you. Are your notes clear on what Commissioner Havillane was saying about the very first set of changes there?
Yeah.
I want to make sure we get that. Okay.
Yeah, so essentially shifting the brown part to be more like, essentially, probably Alternative A.
Yeah, more like Alternative A, yeah.
Got it.
But with the same density essentially that we have on Alternative C.
Thank you.
You know, one thing I'll mention about that is when you drive through Beaverton and Sherwood right now and you can see all the development there, in the areas where there is a more dense product along the road versus a less dense product, it is a very abrupt experience for people that are on roadway, on the motorway. And so, maybe it's just I'll get used to that, but this is going to be a very abrupt, a very dense along the road would be very abrupt. And it would be like, wow, you're in Los Angeles now, so, I don't know, maybe it'll always be that way regardless of how dense it is along the road. That's just been my experience watching Beaverton expand.
I guess you could, if you moved the Type 1 over to around the commercial center, you could still do a north-south transition where you go from Type 1 kind of in the lower right-hand corner around the commercial area and then grad, and go up to transitioning out near the Grange at Type 2, so that it isn't just a, you go straight to Type 3 as you come into the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Or, sorry, go into Type 1. No, yeah. Okay, anything else?
No, I don't know if the commission wants to see if any of the public want to make further comments at this point. I know our time is short. If you do, I'd recommend you keep it fairly short as we are at time at this point.
Yeah, it looks like, I'm okay if we've got some quick comments that the public wants to make as a result of the conversations we've had here. All right, it looks like Sparkle's raising her hand, or has raised a couple times. Well, Mr. Polly, I'm not sure if we have a-
There's Sparkle's hand.
Looks like Sparkle's raising up. Yeah, it keeps going up and then back down.
Do you want to try to unmute her?
There we go. All right, Sparkle, if you want to unmute yourself?
Yeah, I've been watching this whole thing and I, I noticed that you're not using the power lines for anything at all. I would think that the roads and, you know, a lot of things can, you know, that's been my gripe all the way along is not using the power lines. And I remember the last time at one of the meetings, there was one fellow who was saying that they were, you know, that they were not a place where he would want to be under. And I remember that he was right, except that about six years ago, they put up new lines and it does, they don't snap and pop and your hair doesn't raise up when you're underneath them and you hardly hear any noise except in the fall when it's, when the new, when the fall rains start. They're not an unpleasant place to be now, because the lines are newer and more powerful, I think. But I, I'm just sorry that you're not using, you know, that large expanse of power line for your infrastructure. And I'm curious as to who, who makes the checkout for parks? Since it's parkland that seems to be popping up on my property, I'm just curious, who purchases the parkland? And I'm done now.
Okay. I will say, I know in these, in these, in these diagrams, it looks like there's nothing there, but there's still the potential for parking and, and streets such as connecting up from essentially where the Grange is over to the portions of your property along Keely Road, or Colley Road. I should know, it rhymes with my last name. As well as parking to support like commercial or residential in that area. That's, that's, those are all potential uses still there. It just isn't well reflected in this kind of broad diagram. And in terms of parks, you know, we'll be looking at exactly the funding, but, you know, it's either depending on to what extent the developer controls, it may be a deal where the developer donates it, or it could be a purchase or money from other development goes into a pot that purchases the land.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Carr, looks like you got a follow-up?
I'll just add a perspective to that. So, I would, I live within 1,000 feet of the power lines in my house. And your comments, Sparkle, are correct. I think they, the crackling and the popping have diminished. But there's a park right underneath the power lines right in front of my house. So, the ability to do something of that nature exists. But there is, I'm sure with the BPA easement, I'm sure there's restrictions as to what they'll allow, what kind of development they would allow within that. I do know between the agricultural property to the east of my house and the, I believe it's a city park that's in front of my house, there's this wasteland, I guess is a good way to put it. And the BPA comes through every couple of years and just tacks it to the ground. So, it would be my preference, yes, to see it beautified instead of left to the wilds. But, yeah, I'm sure the BPA has limitations as to what we actually can do, can and can't do within that.
Also, I think there's possibility for some stormwater features in there as the land naturally slopes, a lot of the area naturally slopes towards the BPA easement there.
All right. Mr. Polly, anything else?
I think that's it.
All right. Well, thank you, Dan and the rest of the team. Appreciate the work you have put into getting us to this point and look forward to seeing how you incorporate the comments that we provided and all the community feedback.
Thank you.
All right. And I think with that, that's the end of our work session. And then we move into informational. Ms. Bates-Schell, anything of note to talk about regarding the city council or the PC work program?
I do not have anything to note. A brief update on City Hall. We are still under construction on the front counter. So, at this point, we will not be regrouping in council chambers for Planning Commission next month. But there is a possibility that we will gather together in August. So, we'll keep you posted next month to see if we actually are moving on track for that date or not.
Yeah, I peeked in there today. It still looks like there's a ways to go.
There is a ways to go, but we now at least have some constructed counters, kind of. They're not covered, but there's, the shape of them is there.
That's something, I guess.
It's a big something, because it's been almost a year.
Yeah, have you been getting, having troubles getting construction materials?
I believe that is a part of it. There's definitely some supply chain stuff and then coordination of schedules and contractors is always an interesting thing to navigate.
All right. Well, I don't see anything else on the agenda, so it looks like I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Check in. Check in.
And with that, I will call this meeting to be adjourned at 7:57 PM.
Good, all right.
Excellent.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye.
Be careful.